Good evening. I'd like to call the Mount Vernon City Council for March 8, 2023 to order. The time is now seven o'clock. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge and Legion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and made visible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item C is our roll call of council members. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Roxsmith?
Here.
Councilmember Correia?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Councilmember Holst?
Here.
Councilmember Molinar?
Here.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Thank you. Under Committee comments, item one is the review of emails from the public. I'll ask if there's any emails from the public read. And there's them. We'll move on. Item two is public comments. Anyone would like to make a comment, you're welcome to step to the podium at this time. Keep your comments to about a couple minutes, three minutes or so, and if you would state your name and city of residence.
Okay. Good evening, council members, staff, mayor. My name's Adair Orr. I've been a resident of Mount Vernon since 2008. Lived in West Mount Vernon, 1007, Clayne Road. I know this town primarily as a pedestrian, walking downtown and running these streets with Skagit runners. That's my shameless plug for the evening. I'm here tonight to comment on this ongoing discussion about the Design Review Board, of which I am a member. Also been a member of the Planning Commission for several years, and I'm a design consultant for the city of Mount Vernon. I review single-family residences, planned unit developments, and multifamily projects for compliance with the design standards. I do not review projects in the downtown district as a consultant. I'm a design professional with a specialty in single-family homes and small commercial projects. In that capacity, my work is often subject to design review in overlay districts, urban villages, and historic overlays under other jurisdictions. I've even presented my own work to the City of Mount Vernon Design Review Board and recused myself from that board. Design review is undoubtedly an additional step in substantial improvement or development, but it's not an inordinate one, and it's not an uncommon one. As a design professional, it's one of the first questions we inquire about when working in a new jurisdiction. One of the most rewarding experiences as a designer is when that process is a dialogue, and we're given the opportunity to articulate ideas and hear recommendations. It can also be a chance to portray our own work in a different light, or ensure that our presentation is being understood for all the intention behind it. Design is a process, and success comes in a large part from discourse with owners, consultants, and the authorities holding jurisdiction. A Design Review Board provides just that, a dialogue to complement the regulations. It's also worth reminding council members that developers and owners have to balance the requirements of many factors and governing agencies when they propose work: building codes, health codes, energy codes, structural requirements, environmental regulations, fire departments, public utilities, you know how it goes. Why would we have less conviction in the objectives of the professionals who are committed to the welfare of our urban public spaces? The fabric of this town is owned by some, but the urban experience and the streetscape has bearing on all of us, and I don't want to entrust safeguarding that to a single administrative consultant. I feel strongly that the richest interpretation of the design standards can be had through a critical forum. I feel strongly that dialogue with a board will present the smoothest path to successful outcomes. I've witnessed how this board can measure the intent to the design standards and collectively evaluate the applicability to existing buildings through a dialogue with the applicants. When we propose to alter our built environment, the results are long-lasting. The successes and the missteps, right? In areas as precious as our downtown, I can't imagine why the city council would not support a board of informed individuals willing to volunteer their time to guide and facilitate preservation and expansion of the built environment that we cherish. I'm imploring you to maintain this Design Review Board in its current capacity. And for what it's worth, I know I may be excluded from that board, but of all my involvement in the city of Mount Vernon, this is the mission I care most about. Thank you.
Thank you, Adair. All right, any other public comments tonight?
This is likely to be the last you'll hear from me. This is Ellen Gamsen on this matter, with the Downtown Association and also a member of the Design Review Board. And I agree with everything Adair just said, but I'd like to offer you an alternative to consider that I think would meet everybody's needs, because I think we all have the same desires and needs, and that is to protect and enhance what it is that makes our community unique and special and that we all care about. We're all on the same side, right? So, a possible alternative to consider, rather than just doing away with the Design Review Board, would be to reposition it at a different stage in the process, at an earlier stage in the process where it could be most helpful and most facilitative to developers and property owners. I propose that the Mount Vernon Downtown Association will create and administer a design navigation team. That includes individuals with knowledge, expertise, and commitment to the design standards and their intent to preserve the character, look, and feel of our special historic district. The design navigation team would meet at regular and published intervals. And the purpose of the design navigation team would be to assist applicants with understanding the design standards, to offer feedback, ideas, and suggestions to applicants, and should result, will result in an increased likelihood of design compliant applications, result in a swifter process, a more positive experience for developers in the downtown, and good project outcomes for the entire community. The design navigation team would be making recommendations, but ultimate authority for final decisions post-application would rest with the city. And furthermore, I would suggest that the design navigation team be offered the opportunity to review proposed amendments to the standards and also make recommendations in that regard, and that there should be a process put into place by which those standards could be reviewed and amended as necessary, and certainly on a regular basis. Because as we all know, technology changes rapidly, and we need to keep up. That would be my suggestion as an alternative to just getting rid of the opportunity for individuals to get some essentially free design consultancy and have their process smoothed, facilitated, and made more efficient. So, I'd like you to consider that as an option as you move into the decision-making aspect of this discussion. Thank you very much for all of your listening.
Thanks, Ellen. All right, any other public comments tonight? All right, moving on. Our current consent agenda has items A, B, and C. It is council meeting minutes, payroll checks, claims, and transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Melissa, and a second by Gary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion, Gary. Thank you. Under reports, we have three committee reports, and we're going to start out with our Development Services Committee report, and that's councilmember Melissa Beaton. Melissa?
Thank you, mayor. So, we last met in the actual Development Services Committee on February 15th, where we talked about our design standards review, and it was a lengthy meeting. We talked about current processes. We looked at the structure and the role of the Design Review Board members, staff, and consultants, as well as potential changes. We took a look at the administrative review process, and then a couple different options for structure were discussed. After this discussion, and it was lengthy, council requested additional information that was provided the next week, February 22nd, during finance and parks. And then we received 2023 Comp Plan and Development Service Regulation Docket update. So, we had a discussion on the completed and outstanding 2022 docketed items and then proposed 2023. There were a couple on there that council suggested that we take a look at, so we're doing that. And then the last item we talked about were department updates that included staffing updates, a new called Camino software platform. It just basically gives basic process questions to those that, just to the layperson that's going through the development process, and which included like business licenses and things like that. And then, meeting adjourned at 8:05.
All right, thank you. Item two is our Public Safety Committee report, and that's councilmember Mark Holst.
Good evening. The Public Safety Committee met last Wednesday, March 1. The entire council was present for that meeting. Started off the meeting with an overview of the Police Department. Chief Kamik gave us a presentation on the activities of the Police Department for 2022. Really, there was no numbers that were shocking or surprising. There was a couple areas where crime had gone up slightly. There was areas where crime had gone down. There are areas that they're going to continue to monitor and see if there's any pattern to this, or whether it was a one-time, one-year event. Talked about some of the things that they're implementing in 2023 for crime prevention. We're not going to talk about those because we don't want the criminals to know what those are. We then moved into a discussion, the mayor led a discussion on some funds that we have available through House Bill 1590. There's a North Flare program that the county's operating. There's some funds that may be able to be used to offset some commitments that can't quite be met at this time, and to help get the permanent supportive housing project open. I think council's fairly open to assisting in any way they can in that, so that project, Spark Martha's Place, can move forward. We had some continued discussion about downtown Design Review Committee. There'll be further conversation with regards to what changes we're going to make in that Design Review Board. We'd like to, council's desire is to make the process easier and cleaner for to navigate, and so that's going to be an ongoing discussion, and we adjourned about 8:30.
All right, thank you, Mark. Next up is our Public Works and Library Committee, and that's councilmember Gary Moeller. Gary?
Thank you, Jill. Tonight, we opened the meeting at 6 o'clock. First up, our program coordinator, Blaine Chesterfield, introduced us to consultants from Brown and Caldwell. They gave us a presentation on the city draft 2023 Stormwater Management Program. This draft can be found on the city's website for further review, if you'd like to see that. The city remains in compliance with the municipal stormwater permit, and comments regarding the program need to be submitted to Public Works by Wednesday, the 22nd of March. Next, Bill Volak gave us some project updates. Currently, we have some bid awards going out for La Venture Hoag Road improvements. Our construction management transpo is going to be 142,818. Hoag La Venture Improvement Project Excavation West for 757,000. Our 2023 curb ramp program, always active construction, is the winner on that bid for 430,458. And then, our 2023 paving program, Cola Curcio Brothers will be receiving that bid for $1,620,000. All these projects' bids came in at, below the engineers' estimate and are being presented to council this evening. Also, the Alpine Wall repair was completed and will be presented for project acceptance next month. Then, Chris Phillips, our Public Works Director, gave us some updates on our State Route 536 Bridge. We're trying to get them into compliance. They are going to fix the bridge to get them in our compliance with the Washington State Complete Streets Programatics. So, we're trying to look at some alternatives there coming up in the future. City council also reviewed the transportation benefit signage. These are going to be signs that go up and kind of tell people how their tax dollars are being spent on different projects throughout the city. Next, we had our Library Committee with Isaac Huffman, our librarian. He updated us on the construction of the Library Commons Project, including the discovery of a fourth tank that was removed. In addition, they've already started to pour the concrete, and then he talked about some of the federal grants, local grants, and capital committee for fundraising progress over the last month. General library updates also include a check from the co-op for 4% varieties, new gallery items and program updates. Also is including hiring for new service models going into the future as we expand this library. Then we had a little bit on the good of order. We're working with PSE, looking into getting rebates back for some of our charging stations. And PUD, we're also looking at doing a collaborative thing with them where they would pay for two soccer fields and renovations for two soccer fields and a baseball field in Mount Vernon. And we closed the meeting at 6:56.
All right, thank you, Gary. Next up is item B, councilmember comments. Any councilmember comments tonight? Moving on, under mayor's report, just a quick update for the public on the Mount Vernon Library Commons construction update. Remember, you can go to our city website, mountvernonwa.gov, and if you follow the link there on the front page, you can see the live cam, or you can get our updates. You can watch on YouTube our construction updates as well. So, we want to make sure there's lots of ways to get information about what's going on downtown. This week, Puget Sound Energy has completed their main scope of work, and they're no longer impeding our critical path of construction. The project team is working on recovery schedule opportunities to mitigate the PSE schedule impacts. So, they've caused us some delays. We're trying to make up some time. We've got some time to do that. First major concrete pour occurred on Monday, February 27, and I wish I knew how many trucks this was. Maybe Public Works can help me. It's 700 cubic yards of concrete was poured at the west half of the MAP Foundation. I don't know if that's like...
Seventy trucks.
Oh, good. Someone said that. Seventy trucks, good. Seventy concrete trucks. That gives you some perspective. Also, in March, the focus is going to be continuing to pour the concrete for the footings, the MAP Foundation is what they call the elevator pits, and then the columns are going to start. Restoration of Third and Kincaid, people are probably most anxious about that traffic there. That's going to be in progress, and we'll have that area ready by the end of the week in time for our Tulip Festival traffic that will start showing up in town. So, we'll get that open. Also, a big thank you to Lighted Construction. We had expressed a fondness for lights on cranes, and they said, well, we'll put some up for you. So, they should be on, starting really consistently, starting anytime, and so thanks, Lighted, for making a little festive crane for us. Also, just a recognition of Women in Construction Week. The Mount Vernon Library Commons has had some unprecedented involvement of women on not only the design team, but in our construction. So, here's a picture. And Katie, from left to right, Kate Lambert, she's with Geoengineers. She's our geotechnical inspector. Christine Baldwin with HKP Architects, she's our project architect. Samantha Thaw with Lighted Construction is a carpenter. Ashley Ferguson with Lighted Construction is the senior project engineer. Bree Millward with Lighted Construction is the project engineer, and Mary Gans with OAC Services is the assistant project manager. So, we want to thank and recognize the women that are working on our project, especially during Women in Construction Week. So, all right. One last thing, and I don't have a slide on because we just found out today, but we'll put something up on our website, is our legislators are working in Olympia in session, and they're starting to take a little bit of breaks coming home. So, this weekend, just announced this afternoon, the 10th Legislative District is going to be here in Mount Vernon. That's Senator Mazal, Representative Shavers, and Representative Paul. And they've announced a town hall meeting at Skagit Valley College on Saturday, the 11th, from 4:30 to 5:30. So, we'll put something on our website, but also you can look on their websites, or if you have updates from them throughout session. And then, the week after, the 40th Legislative District is having a town hall, and that's at the PUD Building, and we'll publish those details out as well. So, Saturday, the 18th, and that's, I think, at 11:00 in the morning. So, please feel like you're invited to engage with our state legislators. I'd ask for you to remind them that we'd like $2 million for the Library Commons Project. That would be a good talking point for them. But also, any legislation that you've been following, whether it's law enforcement reform or housing bills, now's the time to talk with them in person, starting this Saturday. So, we'll put information on the website. Okay, item D is committee agenda requests. Any committee agenda requests? All right. We have no unfinished business tonight under new business. Item A is briefing from Skagit County and Skagit County Drainage and Irrigation Consortium. Want to welcome Skagit County Commissioner Peter Browning in the audience tonight. Jenna Freebel, who is the executive director of the Drainage and Irrigation District Consortium. Will Honie, who's the Skagit County Chief Civil Attorney, and I see also Darrell Hamburg from Dyke District 17, has joined us. We're all interested in flooding efforts, so I invite them to step up and give us an update on the FERC licensing process. So, come on up.
Well, thank you. I'm Peter Browning, Commissioner for our district, District Number One. So, thank you for having us. Excuse me, I'm coughing a little bit. It's not COVID, it's just age. I love watching the building going up. It's been really exciting. I've been over hanging out, being a bit of a groupie for the building the last few weeks, so it's been great. All right, we're here to talk about the flood. So, thank you, mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for having us here this evening. Our goal is to provide you with an update on the federal relicensing of Seattle's dams on the Skagit. Flood storage from Ross Dam is the most single, most important flood control measure in Skagit Valley. Without it, we would be looking at a flood of something over eight feet in the city of Mount Vernon this last November, 2021, which would have been absolutely catastrophic for our community and our businesses. It's also important to understand that flood control is the first purpose of these dams under federal law. It's not like we're asking any favor for Seattle, but asking for a safe level of flood control. It's not about power. It's first and foremost about safety. In 1995, when Seattle's dams were last licensed by the federal government, local government was asleep at the switch and didn't participate at all. I was around then, and it's absolutely true. We just, it never made the news. And we all ended up with an unsafe flood storage, ineffectual salmon mitigation, and just a really bad deal for our community. Coming into this relicensing, Seattle said flat out that they plan to just maintain status quo. That doesn't work for the federal state agencies. It won't work for the Skagit tribes, and it won't work for us as a community. So, we have joined forces with the tribes and the agencies. Together with Dyke Partnership, Darrell, and the Drainage Consortium, Jenna, as well as the Skagit tribes and agencies, we've been working around the clock for the past three years to make sure we protect our community and its interests in this process. It's been, it hasn't been an easy road. You've probably gotten some of the sense of that from media coverage over the past couple of years, thanks to Will. But because of the local unity we've been able to create, we've been able to make some real progress, and here's where we are. We have filed a unified flood request with FERC, supported by most of the local governments in the Skagit Valley, including the county, cities and towns, and Dyking and Drainage Districts, the PUD, among others. Our flood ask is supported by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the Upper Skagit Indian Tribe. Our FERC filings demonstrates that our flood ask helps salmon and doesn't interfere with Seattle's economic interests in power production. We feel like we're in a really very strong position. Seattle's new federal license will last for the next 50 years, and we know the tribes look down the road for about seven generations, so we're right in sync with them. So, our grandchildren will be dealing with whatever comes out of this. It's very critical we do it right. The way we do this is by continuing to reflect on our local unity. I want to say that again. Our success depends on local unity. The facts, the law, and science are all on our side. Our task is to stand together as a community, and I really want to thank you for this evening. And I'd like to turn this over to Will Honie from Prosecuting Attorney's Office to discuss some of the important background and detail that you want to, that you need to understand. After that, we'll take some questions, and thank you again for having us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers. I'm Will Honie with the Skagit County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. What I thought I'd talk about, we came in front of you last September to talk about the flood ask, the letter that we were planning to submit to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Quite a bit's happened since then. Commissioner Browning laid out some of it. You know, a lot of what's transpired in this whole situation has to do with, I think, something along the lines of the stories that were told and the stories that we understand. There was a piece in the Seattle Times today that discussed some of that. And they don't always pan out to be what we understand to be the truth. And you know, that's why history's great, because we can understand what actually happened. And I think that's what I wanted to talk about this evening, is the history of this project, because I think it's important for all of us in the community to understand that we are on the right side of history here, when we're on the right side of this. Obviously, the first folks that were here were the tribes, and their culture and their lives were oriented around fishing. These dams were built without their permission. No one asked them. They didn't even have the right to vote or to express themselves as citizens at the time. Another thing that was here, long before the dams and its flood control effects, was farming. This land was dyked and drained. Most of that was relatively complete by 1900. You know, the dams were started in their construction in 1919, but there wasn't any significant flood control benefit from the dams until 1947, when the Ross Project was completed. Gorge and Diablo Dams don't have a significant bearing on the flood control picture. You know, and it obviously has a significant impact on flood control, but it also has a significant impact on the volume of the river in the summer months. Prior to Ross, which releases water throughout the late summer and early fall in quantities higher than historically existed. So, old timers before Ross can remember walking across the Skagit on really low-flow years. So, it's fundamentally changed the river. So, when the project was authorized in 1947, the Board of County Commissioners asked for the top 15 feet of Ross to be used for flood control, and then-representative, later Senator Henry Jackson, Scoop Jackson, supported that with the Army Corps. And so, the Army Corps of Engineers recommended 200,000 acre feet by the 1st of November, exactly what we're asking now. The federal government, the FERC, or its predecessor entity, the Federal Regulatory, or Federal Power Commission, I should say, adopted that as the standard for Ross. So, in 1947, when the project was authorized with flood storage, flood control as its first operational purpose, what we're currently asking for, 200,000 acre feet by the 1st of November, was what was required. Over the intervening years, Seattle threw some, I guess I could just call it political machinations. Quite good at it, then and now. And they were successful in getting the feds to dial down the level of storage based on essentially the argument that storing water, as much water as possible for the winter months, when power is at peak demand, is what was needed. And so, as a result of that, now, I would add, without any public notice, opportunity to be heard, opportunity to comment to anybody in the Skagit Valley. This is 1953. Things were a little different then. They got this dialed down. The rationale was that it would save some undetermined amount of money. They figured the entire bill for flood storage, the difference between zero and 200,000 acre feet by the 1st of November, was $96,000 a year. However, drawing it down, or dialing down the flood storage to what we currently have, is never really determined. So, it was something quite a bit less than $96,000 a year. This is the reason that our flood storage got dropped down. And so, you also have to remember that then, we had a situation where there was, you know, millions of dollars in property valuation, millions of dollars in infrastructure. Now, we calculate it's over $8 billion at risk in the flood plain, between $6 billion in property valuation and about $2 billion in Dyking Drainage Infrastructure, in the dyked and drained portion of the Skagit Delta. So, that's what we were stuck with. And time moved forward, and in 1995, Seattle got its project relicensed, as Commissioner Browning suggested, for whatever reason. All of local government just didn't participate. I don't really know why, but, and as they say in the natural resources space, if you're not at the table, you're dinner. So, what occurred is that we were stuck, that same inadequate, unsafe level of flood storage carried forward in the 1995 license. But another thing that happened is the tribes demanded additional spillage of water in the late summer and early fall months to augment flows and, you know, make sure there's more water in the river when the river goes low. No more walking across the Skagit. We're going to keep water in the river. Water, of course, is fish habitat, and particularly if it can be mated or related... and particularly if it can be maintained at a relatively stable rate, not ramped up and down by the project, that water is fish habitat within the river. And so, that, you know, over the course of that time period since 1995, what the hydrograph reflects is that Ross has been drawn down for fish flows, kind of sporadically and haphazardly, albeit, but, so not at the same place, but in most years, it's come fairly close to what we're asking by way of drawdown. Again, we're just, the bathtub is getting drawn down, so there's room for the floodwater to come in and take the peak off of the floods. And so, as we came into this current relicensing, we could see a couple of things. You know, there are obviously county and consortium agriculture, Dyke Partnership objectives in the habitat space related to fish passage and so forth, and they are connected to this. However, you know, our community's principal objective obviously revolves around flood storage. And so, what we asked for is, again, what was required when this project was authorized. In 1947, the Army Corps found what we're asking for to be the necessary safe level it still is. And so, working together with the Dyke Partnership, with the consortium, we asked for this safe level of storage. The Army Corps of Engineers has supported us. They've been, made that clear over the course of the last year, and then recently in their formal FERC filing. So, FERC, or, excuse me, Seattle City Light, the end of November, filed its draft license application. So, this is sort of the first public reveal. There's been lots of semi-confidential discussions and so forth, but this is, you know, the first time Seattle City Light's saying, this is what we want, this is what we're going to do. And of course, what that reflected is just status quo, no response to what we've asked. And so, the Army Corps filed in support of our ask very explicitly, just, I'm pretty sure, I think they just cut and pasted our language. It couldn't have been better. The letter that we filed, which the city supported, as did Anacortes, Cedar Woolley, Burlington, lots of others, as Commissioner Browning mentioned, you know, what we did is demonstrated very carefully that, you know, not only does what we're asking for not run afoul and conflict with the needs of the fisheries resource for appropriate flow in the river, it actually is beneficial. It just essentially sets a, sets a target by the 1st of November. Of course, you know, having water around in November's never a problem around here. It's between August and November. And so, you know, it's very much consistent. We've been working with the Upper Skagit Indian Tribe, which of course is the main tribal driver in the relicensing, and ensuring that our ask is, doesn't conflict with fish passage. And furthermore, you know, looking again at how Seattle has been required now to spill water for fish, starting in August into September, and again, that's just drawing things down to where we want it. Well, what's happened over here is, you know, remember back in 1953, the original justification was electricity is really valuable in the winter, we need as much as we can get. Well, that's changed, and it's almost coming to the point of flipping now. The electricity in its peak demand is occurring in the late summer months, because everybody's now using air conditioning, heat pumps, so on and so forth. And so, what it reflects is there's no apparent loss of revenue. And so, it really is a win-win. You know, it's consistent with the needs of the fisheries resource, and there's no apparent impact on Seattle's economic bottom line. So, what we're looking at at this point is that Seattle will be filing its final license application in late April. We are hopeful, as we move forward, you know, it appears that some of the fisheries mitigation issues are getting resolved. I won't bore you with the connectivity between them, but suffice to say, there is connectivity. It appears that they're getting resolved in a favorable way, and we think that hopefully will clear the way for Seattle to, from our perspective, come to its senses and work with us and support, you know, this ask that our unified local community is seeking with the support of the Army Corps of Engineers, and agree that FERC should include this as a condition in the license. Now, if they don't, it's important that we continue to work on this. And we'll be looking for your support to that end and coming forward with more information and, you know, seeking appropriate support as the situation develops. And I guess I'd just like to underscore what Commissioner Browning said. I mean, you know, local unity is really important, and I think we have that in the sense that more or less, all the governments in the Skagit Valley and the Army Corps as well. And again, that's very significant. The Army Corps is charged by Congress with matters of flood control in the United States. They are the experts. You know, I think I may have mentioned this in the last time we presented, but back a long time ago, a long, long time ago, when I first started with county government, we had something called the GI Process going on, and it was an analysis of what are the best flood control measures that can be taken in the valley. And now, you know, back then, this was before Mayor Bedrow was mayor, and there was a fellow named Bud Norris that was mayor, and there was another fellow in Burlington that was mayor. And we spent a lot of time arguing. And, you know, I think that's fair to say, and not a lot of time making progress. And I think that lesson learned was not lost on us coming into this, the importance of local unity, you know, obviously makes it a lot easier when the Army Corps is on our side. But, you know, back then, the county took a position different than Mayor Norris, took a position different than Mayor Brunson in Burlington, who were supporting a consultant that was taking a sort of more aggressive posture than the Army Corps. And we said, no, we're, you know, we're, of course, we're taking the kind of more conservative position about the risk of floods. We have to go with the Army Corps, we said. That was a point of contention, and we really stood on that. And so, what we're doing now is no different than that. We are, you know, there's a lot of arguments to be had about all of this. It's very complicated. Everybody's, you know, got their own skin in the game, so to speak. But we are very committed to following the guidance of the Army Corps of Engineers and their expertise, and that's what we're doing now. And I hope you'll all feel secure in our position, knowing that it's supported that way. So, I guess I've gone on for long enough, and I'd like to open it up for questions. Jenna Freeble is our technical expert. She's a UW Engineering School graduate, runs the Drainage Consortium. And what that is, is 12 drainage districts that provide the drainage and tide grade infrastructure and the environmental interests of what amounts to, what's just short of 60,000 acres of farmland and the entire Skagit Delta effectively. And then, of course, Daryl is the chairman of the Dyke Partnership, which is all of the Dyke districts along the mainstem Skagit that protect the population centers, Mount Vernon, Burlington, and so forth. Very important jobs, very smart folks that we all depend on greatly. So, thank you, and we'll take any questions.
All right. Any questions from council? To Will or any of our guests? And thank you, Commissioner Wiesen, for joining us as well. All right. Well, congratulations on just getting the process through. I did forward the letter from the Army Corps at our council, so they're aware of that. And I think we'll be ready for the next step and see how we can support as we go forward.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
All right. Item B tonight is a contract award for the Hoagla Venture Improvements Project. It's Amendment Number Three. Bill Bullock, our city engineer, is here to present this item. Bill.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, I think I have four of these in a row for you, so I'll just stay up here. So, this is a contract award for the Hoagla Venture Improvements Project, specifically for construction management portion of it, which is an amendment with the Transport Group. So, this is Amendment Number Three, and I'll read the memo into the record. "The main objectives of this project are to signalize this intersection with the protected left turn lanes on each leg, eliminate the sidewalk gaps leading into the intersection, upgrade all of the ADA ramps and approaches, and rehabilitate the pavement. The signal improvement will increase capacity from LOS E or F to B by allowing long queues to empty in a controlled fashion rather than cross one at a time. The city was awarded a $1.3 million Urban Arterial Program grant from the Transportation Improvement Board, also known as TIB, with a $348,000 city match. Transport Group is currently under contract for design services for this project, which now has been bid for construction this summer. Staff recommends amending the current contract with the Transport Group to include construction management services, for example, full-time inspection, contractor administration, testing, coordination, change orders, and et cetera. The city has negotiated a scope and fee with the project budget, within the project budget, for $142,818.03 with the Transport Group. Our recommendation is a motion to authorize the mayor to amend the contract with Transport Group for construction management services on the Hoagla Venture Intersection Improvements Project," sorry, "for an additional amount of $142,818.03 for a new contract of amount not to exceed
Any questions? Questions for Bill on this item? All right.
Here, and now, motion for the approval of the third amendment to the contract.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion by Juan and a second by Mary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We're excited to see that one startin'. All right. Item C, then, is the bid award for the Hoagla Venture Intersection Improvements Project. Bill.
This is the bid award for the construction portion of this project. I will, the introduction and background is the same as the last one, so I'll skip it if that's okay. But our findings and conclusions is that we received nine bids received on February 14th, 2023, ranging in price from $757,366.043 to $1,195,733, with a low bid provided by Excavation West of Cedar Woolley. The bid provided by Excavation West was found to be responsive and prepared in accordance with the contract documents. Construction cost estimate for this project was $1,127,000 or $900,000 without contingency. So, we did add a fair amount of contingency to this, because as you know, we've been finding that our consultants in other jurisdictions have been exceeding the engineers' estimates. So, we made sure we were utilizing our full budget for this. So, we're pretty pleased with this bid that we received. Staff recommends that council award the construction bid for the Hoagla Venture Intersection Improvements Project to Excavation West in the amount of $757,366.043.
All right. Questions for Bill on this?
Now, I'd move the council award the Hoagla Venture Project to Excavation West.
All right. Thank you. A motion by Mark and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item D is a bid award for our 2023 curb ramp projects, and that's Bill again.
Thank you. So, this is a bid award for 2023 curb ramp project. The project includes sidewalk repair and replacement of the ADA ramps primarily associated with the 2023 paving program. The ADA ramp and drainage modific, I'm sorry. So, this primarily deals with the ADA ramps primarily associated with the 2023 paving program, the ADA ramp and drainage modifications at Sixth and Lawrence intersection, and other work. The 2023 paving program street segments associated with the ramp improvements are East Division Street from Wa to Big Lake Road, Anderson Road, Old Highway 99 to the I-5 Bridge, and North Eighteenth Street, basically West First Street to College Way. So, quite a bit of paving miles. Eleven bids were received on February 17th, 2023, ranging in price from $430,558.05 to $716,639, with a low bid being provided by Always Active Construction. The bid provided by Always Active Construction was found to be responsive and prepared in accordance with the contract documents. Construction cost estimate for this project was $547,345.00. Staff recommends the council award construction bid for the 2023 curb ramp project to Always Active Construction in the amount of $430,500, or 400, geez, wow, I'm being really tongue-tied today for some reason. I apologize. $430,558.05.
Any questions for Bill on this?
Just one. Bill, I believe this is all funded through our Transportation Benefit District, which the voters had approved.
Correct.
A number of years ago.
That's, the Transportation Benefit District is the primary funding source.
Okay, great.
I'd move to approve the constructional bid to, for the 2023 curb ramp project to Always Active.
Second. Well, do, motion by Gary and second by Melissa? Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And then, item E is our bid award for our 2023 paving project.
Okay. This is my last attempt not to get his tongue tied as he did last time, so I apologize.
You can do it, Bill.
Okay. So, this is the bid award for 2023 paving project, and this project includes grind and asphalt overlay of the existing pavement, full-depth spot repairs, adjusting existing utilities, installing pavement, permanent pavement markings, and other work. The street segments selected for these improvements are the arterial streets are East Division from Wa Road to Big Lake Road, Anderson Road from Old 99th to the I-5 Bridge, North Eighteenth Street from West First Street to College Way, and also three neighborhood streets, East Fox Hill Street, North Thirty-Fifth Place, and North Thirty-Fifth Street, which is a small neighborhood just north of College Way. Six bids were received on February 22nd, 2023, ranging in price from $1,620,556.048 to $1,995,356.020, with a low bid provided by Colacurcio Brothers of Blaine. The bid provided by Colacurcio was found to be responsive and prepared in accordance with the contract documents. The construction cost estimate for this project was $1,762,594.00. Staff recommends council award the construction bid for the 2023 paving project to Colacurcio Brothers in the amount of $1,625,56.048.
All right.
I'd like to move that the council awards the construction bid for the 2023 paving project to Colacurcio Brothers.
Thank you. Motion by Mary and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
I'd just like to make one comment on this contract. I think Bill really deserves some kudos here. This was, some of these projects were delayed from last year, and the recommendation was by Bill to postpone those because of the high cost of asphalt at the time. And if I understand right, we saved about $60 a ton on asphalt by postponing that. So, we're getting a lot more bang for our buck this year than if we'd moved forward last year. So, thank you for your diligence and your recommendations, and it all came out well.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, council, for indulging me in that decision. It wasn't necessarily an easy one, but it ended up saving us between $4,000 and $6,000 this year. So, I'm very pleased.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Mark, for making that comment. All right. Item F tonight is an approval of an agreement with Helping Hands Food Bank, and Peter Donovan is here to present this item. Peter.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, council. Just some CDBG bookkeeping tonight with this contract. If you remember back, most of you were here, 2020 pandemic, HUD sent billions of dollars If you remember back, most of you were here, 2020 pandemic, HUD sent billions of dollars out through CDBG entitlement communities, which Mount Vernon is one, and they were trying to get money into the hands of folks who needed it the most. Council had some decisions to make with about $488,000 that came through that funding. And you did that by way of small business grants, getting our local businesses money. You also took care of some of the most vulnerable in the community with motel vouchers, eviction prevention, and you bought some pallet shelters for the first step shelter in Burlington. Tonight, as we had some of that money returned to us by an agency that was unable to spend it, our CDBG consultant was able to identify Helping Hands Food Bank and the need that they had in delivering food to high-risk seniors in our community. So the contract that's before you tonight that staff's recommending approval for is that the mayor would enter into this agreement with Helping Hands Food Bank to fund the food delivery activities described within, and the contract amount is $48,000.
Any questions for Peter on this? I know your packet had the contract attached, so.
Yeah.
Why Peter doesn't go through all of that?
No, I think this is a great repurpose of the funds that were allocated, weren't unable to be used, so this is going to go to help those that really could use the extra help. So with that, I would move the approval of the agreement with Helping Hands Food Bank.
And before I hear a second, a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
I was curious about, because the memo explains that there was a sub recipient who returned the funds, I'm curious who the sub recipient was.
So. So the funds that were returned came from two categories. The two categories were motel vouchers, and there was about $10,000 there, and then direct payments for rent, utilities, and eviction prevention was about $30,000. Community Action wasn't able to identify recipients for all of that funding for those purposes, and so that went unspent. Additionally, in there, there's about $8,000 in just admin funding that was there. So HUD has been really pressing, as they typically do, what's the plan, what's the city's plan for the funding, and we were able to identify a pretty significant need.
Thank you. Thanks. The agreement also states that I think it runs from all the way to June of this year, June 2023, so the $48,000 would go to basically be expended by the next three months?
Yes. So they don't have much time, but they're confident that they can spend that. And that also can apply retroactively, you saw in there likely that the date that it started was July of 2022. So some of that activity has started. With the contract approval, then that would be approved to be funded.
Technically, we need a second for discussion, but I think we're fine, so. Iris, do you have a question?
Yes. I'm listening, okay? $40,000, the whole fund is going to go for Helping Hands Food Bank? All the money is going to them?
That's correct, yeah. For, they have a, they're expanding their food deliveries program for seniors, and so they have a staffing position as well as funding for fuel and supplies and all of those things.
And what about the housing vouchers? Who's going to be able to receive those vouchers, housing vouchers?
The Community Action wasn't able to find anyone that could use those, the rental assistance. And that was even with the assistance of, at one point, Mount Vernon, the city of Mount Vernon went and literally knocked on doors for our police department to help find another $57,000 for Community Action for that one.
So to clarify, the Community Action with the support of the city couldn't find a way to spend those monies the way they were allocated, but I'd like folks to know that there were a lot of folks who were helped through Community Action, through those rental vouchers, several million dollars, and we were able to bring additional money from other communities who weren't spending it into our community. So I think this was the small rounding error, when you look at several million dollars, just kind of put that out there to continue to answer Councilmember Morales's question.
All right, there's a motion.
Yeah, I'll give a second.
All right, thank you. Motion by Mark and a second by Juan. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. That concludes our agenda items for tonight. I'll ask our city, wait, I will ask our city attorney if there's a need for an executive session?
Yes, the council will be in executive session until 8:20 PM and will not be expected to take further action following the executive session. The grounds will be for discussion with legal counsel regarding agency, the city's enforcement actions, litigation or potential litigation to which it, the governing body or member acting in an official capacity is, was likely to become a party with public knowledge regarding the discussion, is likely to result in either adverse legal or financial consequence to the city pursuant to RCW 423110 subsection 1I, and moreover, to discuss issues related to collective bargaining sessions, including contract negotiations, grievance meetings, and discussions related to the interpretation or application of a labor agreement, or planning or adopting the strategy or position related to collective bargaining, which is wholly exempt from the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to RCW 423140 subsection 4.
All right, you said 25 minutes, right, Kevin?
Correct.
All right, so it'll be adjourned in the executive session, probably at 8 o'clock, and we'll be done with that at 8:25. Thank you.